Sign in on 4.6 million dollar check. Do I share the taxes? Send all, you're welcome.
Speaking of S C R D, is it the only assets received that they can't fix individually?
Oh. I can't get charged in the month.
Probably going to cost that much for them to continue to come up with excuses. Unbelievable. Of course, they haven't used the rent.
So let's issue a little bit more rate. Or do we send further?
Are we ready to go? I'm going to assume we are. My call to order, the Town of Gibson's Committee, the whole meeting of July 22nd, 2025, at 1:00 PM. When I said 1:00, it was still 1:00 PM. Clicked over to 1:01 when I finished my sentence, so just want to make that record clear. And we're honored to be gathered on the traditional territory of the Skahomish Nation. Largely, this meeting is looking at quarterly reports, getting updates from all our departments and some external agencies. So first, we need to approve the agenda. Moved by Counsel Thompson, seconded by Counsel Kroll. All those in favor? The motion carries, and first on the agenda is Chief Rob Michael from the Gibson's and District Volunteer Fire Department to present his Quarter Two report. Welcome.
Thank you, and thank you for the opportunity to present today. Membership is currently at 46 firefighters, which includes our eight new recruits. Unfortunately, the department lost four firefighters this quarter due to various reasons: demands, time, family commitments. Dwayne Hogberg was one of those members as he retired and subsequently moved away from the Sunshine Coast after 26 years of service. Dwayne was a well-respected member of the department who contributed to numerous projects, paid on call and apparatus replacement committees, to name a couple. He was an emergency vehicle instructor and worked his way up the ranks to captain, eventually stepping down to provide newer members with some leadership opportunities. Although he stepped down from his formal role, he never ceased to be a leader in the department, and the void that is left behind will be impossible to fill. The department posted for an Assistant Chief of Prevention, and Chris Fashion was the successful candidate. He officially takes on his new responsibilities this week and has already shared some exciting plans to update the department's fire prevention programs. The focus of training this quarter was recruit training, hazardous materials response, live fire, firefighter fitness, and pump operations. Building on the success of joint training opportunities, the fire department was able to participate in a regional recruit boot camp. This training weekend saw instructors and students from numerous local fire departments come together to work through their exterior practical skills as a group. Additionally, on May 13th, members from the Gibson's, Roberts Creek, and Halfing Bay Fire Department were invited to participate in a wildfire training exercise in North Vancouver. Operation Peak Preparedness was designed to improve wildland firefighting strategies, tactics, and objectives around multi-agency interoperability, communication, wildfire fighting, structure protection, and access in a semi-ulated wildland urban interface fire. The scenario was based on Grouse Mountain and involved agencies from the Lower Manland, interior Vancouver Island, and the Sunshine Coast. The fire department responded to 71 calls for service in the second quarter, including someone who had fallen from a treehouse, a tree that had fallen onto someone, a structure fire, a dryer on fire at a local motel, and a multi-vehicle incident on Gibson's Way. The fire prevention team completed 67 fire and life safety inspections, five referrals, and three fire investigations. This quarter, the fire department also hosted several fire hall tours for kindergarten-grade-one students from local elementary schools. And additionally, members of the department were able to assist the Fire Smart team at a local Girl Guide Camp. I'm happy to answer any specific questions on any fire department activities or projects.
Okay, great. Thank you for the report. I'm just looking to counsel for any questions. Counsel Kroll?
Thank you, Mayor White, and to you, Mayor. Great report, and as usual, love the pictures. But one of the things I was inquired, when you're doing training within the community, a lot of times, if you're using equipment and water, I'm assuming you're using hydrant water, which is technically potable water, is that correct?
Go ahead.
Yeah, so quite generally, we use hydrant, which is portable water, but we also have different means as well. We can use creeks and streams and other static water supplies. We need to be very well-rounded, but recognizing that hydrants are the most frequent form of water supply that our fire department would use.
Great. Thank you. And like, I appreciate, you know, having sort of a diverse sources of water as part of your training is important, but so I do appreciate that you do consider using other options. Thank you.
Counsel Thompson?
Thank you for your report. We've had some significant events and tragically fatalities and extreme accidents this year. Can you speak to the emotional trauma support that is available to our volunteer first responders?
Thank you for the recognition of that. You know, that is certainly top of mind in my role as fire chief and is something that we're striving to continuously improve and do better upon. We have some peer support and counseling options, access to counselors, and other support mechanisms, but recognizing that this is a unique job that takes the physical, mental, and emotional toll on our firefighters, and we are striving to improve programs so that we are providing the best service that we can to our volunteer members.
Counsel Kroll?
Thank you, Mayor White. In sort of conjunction with Counselor Thompson's comment, are you aware of Hero Home and Hero Camp?
I'm aware of a couple of different facilities and places, but I haven't heard of those ones specifically.
They're operated, well, they're, first of all, they're available to all first responders, whether it's military, RCMP, search and rescue. And the home is a house in New Westminster that if anyone is hospitalized and has family that need to stay, it's a place they can stay. But the camp is up in the interior, and it's specifically available to people that have experienced trauma and really need some help in dealing with it. And it's a free service to all first responders, so I'm more than happy to forward the contact to you.
Thank you, and so that jogged my memory, but I believe that we're referring to Honor House in Honor Ranch, and I can share that one of our members had received some service from there when they were undergoing some cancer treatment, and that they were gratefully appreciative of what they were able to get from them.
Thanks. Yeah, Counsel Thompson, back to Counsel Thompson.
Thank you. I just wanted to say in conclusion of that, if you need support, reach out, letter writing, any of that nature, or some help researching, just let me know, I'd be happy to help on that front.
Okay, great, and to sum up, I, one, one item I'd like to just comment on on behalf of the town is the congratulations and thank you to Dwayne Hogberg, because, you know, he was a really valued community member, a good neighbor too, and sorry to see him leave the town, but I'm sure that's been his plan in life, and congratulations to him to finish, for finishing up, yeah.
Thank you. We mentally are grateful of the support that we've received on both comments there in France, and I will be sure to pass that on to Dwayne Hogberg, myself as well, and thank you very much for supporting our fire department members.
Thanks. And next up, we have Sergeant Calvin Eard from the RCMP to report on the Quarter Two statistics.
And welcome to Town of Gibson's Council Chambers. It's here, I know, maybe introduce yourself too, it'd be great. I know we've talked on the phone before, but it's your first time here, so it'd be great for council to hear a little more about your background, and I think you've been over a year probably, right? Of course, but I'll leave it to you.
Yeah, so thank you for having me, Calvin Eard, and I've been a member for the RCMP for about 14 years now, coming up on 14. My dad was a member, my grandfather was a member, so it's kind of follow line there. And I've been posted all around B C, mostly in the north, so this is my first southern post. Came here with my family, and I will add that my family doesn't want to leave now, so I think I'm stuck down here, they absolutely love it. I've recognized some people I've seen out in both the community, I have a part-time apartment within the hockey rink in Gibson's and Seashell between coaching, kid sports, and own kid and sports, and so a lot of time is spent there, and yeah, really enjoying it. It's a different pace in the north, different files. And I don't know if that's good for an intro, if that's kind of what you're looking for, open other questions. But yeah, did you want me to jump right into this? Okay, so there's, there's four different documents here. There's two that refer to Sunshine Coast, and then there's two specific to Gibson's. So I was going to speak to the Gibson's one specifically. One is a year-to-date from January to June 30th, and then the second one is the quarterly report to April, from April 1st to June 30th, so specifically speaking to the April 1st to the June 30th for the Quarter Two report. These numbers show different, it breaks down some of our files and the percentages, it shows a 2023 Q2, a 2024 Q2, and then our 2025, which is our current Q2. It also shows a file change percent compared to previous years. So for these files, some of the numbers we want to kind of look at are the red, those indicator file loads have went up, and specifically speaking to some of these are cause disturbance, are suspicious occurrence, so some of those files are directly related because Gibson's doesn't have a large file count to begin with. We could get one or two individuals that will bring those file counts up and affect our numbers significantly, which I was able to do a little bit of digging into before I came here, and I was able to confirm that that was the case for most of those files, so we're not seeing necessarily an uptick in the general population, but specific people. And then the other one that has a spike is there's an abandoned 911, and I believe that, just trying to find it here. So it's under other occurrences, and a 911 false and abandoned, so in 2023, it was three, 24, it went to two, and then this year, it's 10, and that one right there shows a 400% increase. That is to do with how we're reporting our files now, so those used to get concluded to another file. Just for RCMP and the computer system we used, we, in line with the policies that are there, we now document all those files and then relate them to the files, so it's shown more, but they've always actually been there. And that can be anything as simple as like a landline that's, you know, no longer working for tell us that calls 911 every couple months, or when there's a storm blowing up, it's basically like a ghost line, so those files are still getting concluded, they're just now being written instead of just removed from the system. The other thing we've done differently here recently is our mental health calls, so that will show an increase in mental health calls, and we're actually trialing out a new way of reporting this, so our computer system's very specific on how we can document and how we can, there's like, I guess the easiest way of putting it in our system, we can put, if it's mental health or no, this is a simple yes or no question, on each file we deal with. Before, there was very specific parameters around when we could document a mental health file, and that usually had to do around specifically a mental health apprehension or a form, a warrant form from the hospital to go apprehend someone. We've changed that now to include all mental health-related files, so if we know someone specifically suffers mental illness, then what we've done is we're now indicating that is a mental health file, to better capture where our resources are going. So that number will be significantly different than the previous years, and we won't have a good idea of if that's going up or down probably until next year, or when the next quarter comes out, we'll be able to see where it's at. So again, like, that number will reflect differently, and that's just because how we're scoring it now, we think it'll give us a more accurate picture on what we're actually doing out there for our frontline officers. The other one that has gone up significantly that I have a note here is the frauds, and that, I looked at a lot of those files, again, those are, that's a lot of frauds that are coming in by telephone, and those kind of go in waves, there's no really, there's no real explanation on why they come in waves, but they do. Additionally, I think there's been a lot of awareness through media releases around frauds specifically, I've seen them on my own TV watching, just on local commercials, so when we see those, when that awareness comes out, our calls typically go up, but again, I would think frauds are happening all the time, so it could be the awareness factor, but nothing specifically alarming or local frauds, it's again, typically online stuff that's happening. Now, there's a, there's a bunch of numbers attached to each file, and actually, first I was going to point out too, on the Gibson's one specifically, so if you look on the last page of both reports for the Gibson's, it, it has the numbers SC 1500 and SC 1510, so 1510 would encompass lower Gibson's and 1500 would be upper Gibson's. So those are the two file designations, it's, again, we don't, we made that, those borders a few years back, and then that's what it encompasses, so we can better capture what's happening in what specific areas of Gibson's. And that's the points I wanted to highlight, so I'll open it up to questions about the numbers.
That's great to know about those codes too, because, yeah, we weren't aware of that before, and little, little bit more help for us to be able to track where incidents are happening. I just wanted to comment on two. Usually, especially recently, there's been a narrative at the end of these reports that tend to, it tends to address staffing often, like how, how the RCMP is doing with staffing, if a, if a new position's been created, or, or departures of people, and not, without getting into very, really private details, I'm just wondering if you've, you've seen that in previous reports, and if that's something you might be able to comment on generally off the cuff?
Yeah, I, sorry, we don't have, I don't have that report in front of me, I have seen it before. I can speak to a little bit about our staffing numbers, we have one corporal who's retiring this year, so that position is going to be posted right away for a promotion, and that goes across Canada for promotion, so a vacant corporal position. We're currently down, I believe, two constable positions, and those are, we're both seeking applicants for those. Seashell has a few, I'm not sure the exact number, but it does have people off on various sorts of leaves, so that's where we're affected the most is the soft vacancies in the RCMP. They don't fill those because those people intend on coming back, so that's where we end up short the most, but in general, the hard vacancies that we can fill, Staff Sergeant Prunty is actively working on all those to keep them filled.
Thanks, Counsel Kroll.
Thank you for your report, thank you, Mayor White. The, where, you have a marine operation which is based out of Gibson's, I'm just wondering, where do you, where do those stats get recorded?
To the specific patrols out on the marine vessel? So those don't, we don't actually capture those, we could look at the boat stops, it just depends, because it's just like a traffic stop where we would have, if we pull a vehicle over, we don't capture that statistic. If we write a violation ticket, or there's a criminal code offense, like an impaired driving or something, then we'd be able to capture that statistic specifically. I know this year, we do have some proactive patrols coming up in the boat, we've done some out toward Keats already this year, and when we have enough members out on the road that can handle the calls in the city, that, I know the members are very for and proactive about going out on the boat and checking boaters.
Counsel Limley?
Yeah, welcome to Gibson's. Couple questions, one is, a simple one might be, is the municipal bylaw, I don't know if I've missed that before, but, but the, like, the giant swing, it seems, is that the RCMP responding? I'm just curious as to, like, bylaw officers versus police and a municipal bylaw? What would that be? It's just a, just a curiosity for me.
Like how the, how the interface works between our bylaw officers? Yeah, and I mean, it might be not criminal, but RCMP having to respond to bylaw infractions
To assist our bylaw officer?
Sometimes to assist, I would imagine, but also when our bylaw officers aren't, aren't available, I think RCMP comes, but yeah.
That's correct, yes, we're written into the bylaw, and when there isn't bylaw, and like, a noise complaint would be a great example, so after hours, and a neighbor calls in a noise, and we'll go attend that, or maybe a parking violation. Typically, we don't necessarily enforce the bylaw, and we follow up with bylaws the following day to get some feedback on how they're currently handling the practices, but we will attend those, and that's what that stat would reflect.
But, but if there's a, yeah, I mean, we can enforce it, though, I mean, I understand if there's a police are called, and there's a document of that, then, then the next day or next subsequent days, then a ticket can be issued by our, by law enforcement even if they weren't there? Is that's correct?
Yes, and I believe we have the powers to enforce the bylaw as well. If need be, if we were there and bylaws wasn't working, we have the ability to issue those.
Okay, my next question, like, cause for disturbance, I can only assume that, that in, that in, like, the large number of it's probably mental health, or, and the question, which I get asked all the time, obviously, I don't know if it's because I am on council, but it seems that, you know, being sympathetic to mental health, obviously, but there's nothing you can do, like, as far as, you know, like, there are people that are kind of like concerned, or, you know, on edge, when there's obviously cases of severe mental illness, but there's no path, like, like, I mean, I guess the common narrative is that, well, unless they hurt someone, or they hurt themselves, then we can't do anything, but my, then the next question is, well, why would we wait to deal with somebody who's, who has a severe mental illness until they do hurt someone? Like, I, that's what general, that's what people are always asking, right? Because there's incidences in lower Gibson's that people just probably aren't used to. I mean, they're probably used to them in, in different parts of Vancouver, but I think this is more of a new thing for Gibson's to see, you know, severely mentally, you know, disturbances happening, like, you know, and I think C A O witnessed, and I witnessed, like, basic hogtying of someone in the street in the middle of the day. I just, I don't know if there's an answer to the question, but I just don't, there's, there's literally probably nothing that can be done, and I don't mean, you know, throw them in jail, but is there a path that can be taken, or some sort of referral that these people could be not charged with a crime, but almost put, like, helped somehow, I don't know what to say, but I just, because there was one today at Armors Beach again, right? So, and the RCMP was called, it's just like, it's over and over and over again, and generally it's the same people, so I just, that's my curiosity, is it, okay, like, what can be done? Or do we just keep calling the RCMP every time someone snaps, right? Like, I don't know, anyway.
This is a huge, huge policy conversation that's going on provincially, going on federally, going on every time you open the newspaper, a lot of advocacy is happening from U B C M and from F C M to federal and provincial governments about this. It's also really interesting to hear how it plays out in the ground, so I want to give Sergeant Eard a, an opportunity to do that, but, I mean, I'll also, I mean, I'll say, yeah, a lot of advocacy is going on, but, I mean, essentially, big picture, you addressed it when you said, you know, seeing somebody hogtied on the ground, like, there's a, there's a really tricky balance in law between people's constitutional rights and the rights for somebody, you know, arguably, like, there are, there are cases going on right now, and I know provincially, there's a, a human rights case, I believe, that's tying up a lot of the progress or the, the, the work that the provincial government's trying to make in terms of moving towards some more involuntary care. That's, that's, the reason a lot of that's held up is because there's a big human rights case going on right now of probably something like that, probably somebody who was apprehended by, by police somewhere in the province and had a constitutional argument that they, they shouldn't have been, and, and their, their constitutional rights are infringed upon, so that's a real challenge with this. I talk to, we do have, like, I mean, I can think right off the bat, three, three individuals who are often just around town right now, and probably causing all of those calls, if not, if not the vast majority of them, no question about it, and we do talk to, and, and largely, I mean, they're not a criminal violent threat to people, so RCMP has a hard time, then just, you can't just arrest them for nothing. So that's why I think we probably see a lot of the harassment and mischief kind of coming in there, because that's, that's where the line can be, where, where that, that line can be crossed by, by some of those individuals. But, you know, I will just say, yeah, one, I know, and the RCMP is doing a lot of really great work in terms of working with other agencies and, and trying to find ways to address the public's concerns about those individuals, I know that much, and I know you as one person on councils in touch with me a lot about what you're seeing out there, and we, we communicate with the RCMP and, and try to, try to address those issues, so that's, that's what we can do. And I know, I've talked to Vancouver Coastal Health about this too, because they have supports, obviously, and again, involuntary versus voluntary care, they've assured me, they, they send, and, and one of the, one of the problems too, was for a while, Vancouver Coastal Health didn't have the staffing capacity to, to do outreach and come out, come to the community, and all, so it was really voluntary then, it's like, people actually had to come to the hospital if they wanted help. And so that was, that was something that was a concern, and I raised as a concern. Now, Vanco, most recently, a week ago, Vancouver Coastal Health has assured me that they have had outreach people come and visit these individuals, and they've, individuals can say, no thanks, you know, they have their, they have their constitutional rights and say, no, I don't need any counseling help, I don't need any mental health help, and that's basically the end of it, until, like, they can't keep coming every day, so, I mean, usually they do, they do check in again at some point, but, but that's, that's got to be, got, they have to accept that answer. So I'll, that was, that's my answer on like the higher level, but it's also really enlightening to hear how it works for the RCMP on the ground too, so I look forward to what you can add, Sergeant Eard.
Yeah, thanks for the question, I think there was a few different questions there within that one, so the, the first point I'll address is if there's ever a concern about like cause disturbance, or you believe someone's having a mental health crisis, I would encourage you to call us, we'll always attend, we'll always check it out, depending on the priority and what it's We'll always attend, we'll always check it out, depending on the priority and what it's, is going on with the file. If we're busy with other stuff, it may take us a while to get there. But the dispatcher and the supervisor of the road will determine on when the member gets there. So if we know who it is, and depending on what they're doing, that may, that may alter how we're attending the call. I think Mayor Silas hit, hit it right where needed to be hit. That's a small majority of our people that are involved in these mental health calls, they do take up a huge portion of our time out on the road. And that's why we're trying to capture these statistics differently, because if you would call in someone causing a disturbance down in Lower Gibson's before we get there, they're not apprehensible under the Mental Health Act, then we drive away and that would just be captured as a cause disturbance file. The difference is now that person, we're capturing that as a mental health call, because we know there's some mental health, but we weren't able to apprehend them. And the apprehension comes from the Mental Health Act. It gives us the powers to apprehend and bring before a doctor. And we must bring them before a doctor. So everyone we bring to the hospital has to be seen by a doctor and we can't leave them until they are. We can't control what happens at the hospital. I know quite often the hospital is working with us. If we know someone's a, a reoccurring issue, we can voice that and we can express that. And that's where our grounds quite often will come from. That being said, going into a little bit more detail, someone's baseline may, may, may make them not apprehensible. So someone screaming and yelling, walking down the road, that may be their baseline of the day. Versus if they're walking, screaming and yelling down the road with an axe, now they become apprehensible because that's not normal them, for them to be doing, right? So that's where the differences come. And it's, it's not normal behavior to some of us, but that would be their normal baseline. So our apprehension powers are very difficult sometimes to articulate. And again, I can only encourage the, the calls for service, basically build our cases to, to help get, get these people in front of a doctor or the help that they need. In the coming month, we actually have plans to dedicate a specific member to work with the hospital here. And proactively try to engage with the, the people that need the assistance and the mental health. And the goal for that is to try to bring the calls down proactively. Some of these people that we deal with under the mental health hat, it's, I would say we could proactively address some of these calls with this, with this pilot project we're going to try running. And that would be something as simple as someone just forgetting to go in and whether they, they take medications or whether they just need someone to talk to every once in a while versus someone calling in about them because now they're, you know, they're not at their normal behavior. Hopefully that answers most of your questions.
Well, it's a federal and provincial issue in a lot of ways. And, you know, it's, it's, it's something all communities in the country are advocating for. And part of that is the bail, bail conditions too, in, in some of these cases too, where some of these individuals. And that's something that we, we have been increasingly trying to influence a little bit and, 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 you know, at least in one case, letting the crown know the, the, the community impact of some of these instances and, and the, the, the impact on our staffing as well in, in having to deal with some of these incidents and, and individuals and letting, letting the crown know that so it can be presented in the court system. And conditions can be set on bail to, to, to say, you know, this individual can't, can't come and come back to this area of town and, and, or, or they're, they'll be breaching their bail. So that's one, one little thing we can do right now, but it's, it's, it's still the, the bail conditions are a real, real challenge right now, which are trying to be addressed federally largely. I saw Counsel Kroll too. I did, I did want to just mention one other thing too. Counsel Lumley, you said the, the perception of, of somebody actually harming themselves or harming another individual. And then that gives, I think, I just want to be really, you know, really emphasize that as, as Sergeant Eard mentioned, it, it, it doesn't have to reach that point. There are, there are other, a lot of other reasons why the RCMP can intervene and, and even bring, bring somebody in. And certainly, I mean, even, even just when the, if the RCMP determines that there's a, you know, a threat or a probability that, that somebody's a threat to their own safety or to other's safety, then I believe they can be apprehended under the Mental Health Act. I just want to make sure you can confirm that.
Yes, that's correct. And like I said, I really encourage the calls because quite often we'll know who that person is and what their baseline is. So we're given a, quite a bit of training online, in-class training around mental health nowadays, because such a high percent of our call volume is directly related to that. So we have a, a bit more tools to assess the situation and, and go from there.
Counsel Kroll.
Thank you, Mayor White. Something you mentioned Sergeant Eard was you have to, the member has to stay at the hospital until the individual sees a doctor. I know there has been some advocacy for a higher level of security at the hospitals that individuals could be transferred to that individual to free up the member to attend other things. I haven't heard too much lately on the progress of that. And is, is this something that the, the force would be looking for advocacy from the community to support?
Yeah, that would be way above me unfortunately, so I don't have a direct answer for you. I know that it, it, like you had mentioned, it was getting worked on in the sense of trying to release members from the hospital a little bit quicker than where we're at now. I think it comes down to what they have availability for, like the, the holding room that they have at the hospital, how many staff they have on and things like that. So until the Mental Health Act changes, then at this time, we're required to stay there. And like you had mentioned, I know it's in talks, but I don't know how far along that's come. We have no indication that it's changing.
Well, thank you for your report. I think we kept you here longer than we've ever kept the staff sergeant or, or Corporal Atui as well. So.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
You should let them know that you got the hot seat. And yeah, and thanks for those answers to the questions. We really appreciate it. Now on to our internal staffing reports. We're starting with the planning and development services department, quarter two report. And I'll just check to see with the director to see if there are any highlights or updates before we get into questions.
Yes, I do have some updates.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. So this quarter has been focused mostly on the Housing Accelerator Fund initiatives. Development applications have been down, which is not great, but it's given us time to focus on policy work, which is a bonus. So I wanted to highlight the OCP engagement. So we're going to be launching public engagement on the official community plan, starting Monday next week. So we are, we've sent out little postcards to all, we will be sending postcards to all property owners in Gibson's with a link to our website and we're going to have a survey on our website. We're going to be host, holding some pop-up sessions all over town. So at Super Value, at IGA, we're going to set up by the piano at Pioneer Park. And we're also going to go to the Gibson's Public Night Market. So hopefully reach out to a broad range of residents. If you have any suggestions on where else we should set up pop-ups, just let us know. So I wanted to flag that for council. What else? The other thing I wanted to flag, building departments, pretty straightforward, but in, in bylaw, we've had a huge number of complaints. So they were, we've blown the COVID numbers out of the water. So a lot of complaints are coming in. And so that's a big deal. We're responding to a lot of those. And then business license revenue has also increased by 23%, which is great. So when we did the updates to the business license bylaw, it has now reflected in a 23% increase in revenue. So that's good news. Thank you.
Any questions, council? Counsel Thompson.
Thank you, through you, Mayor. With the Housing Accelerator Fund, can you remind me of the process of counting? Because there was a question at one point in time, if it was occupancy permits versus building permits?
Go ahead.
Yes, through the mayor. The, it's all about issuance of building permit. So it's not occupancy. It's just getting the permits out the door.
Other questions? Yeah, the, but the bylaw complaints definitely jumped out for me, but I, it's, it's, the, the breakdown is appreciated there because we can kind of see like, there doesn't seem to be an obvious trend there. It's a, a lot of different complaints, a lot of, a lot of just single category complaints of kind of one-offs of very different things that are going on. So yeah, I think everyone's mental health is maybe on edge a bit. World events, I don't know. Other questions from council? Okay, Counsel Thompson.
Thank you, through you, Mayor. This is in regards to the parking program and the meeting with urban systems. And then I read that bylaw attended that, which was great. But simultaneously reading that there were 87 parking infraction notices. So it was probably a good idea that bylaw was in that meeting. Is there a pattern in those infractions that was relevant to the parking meeting?
Through the mayor, I think there were, and I can't recall all the details of them, but we did have the bylaw team, infrastructure, like public works, infrastructure and infrastructure at the, at the table. So we can identify where there are parking issues on roads, where there's an, like an obvious lack of parking to flag it for the consultant to look at the entire area for where we could do parking improvements.
And just on that parking study again, I think there was a, I heard, I think early in the process, there will be some consultation with some of the, the business owners in Lower Gibson's. Because whenever, yeah, whenever I get complaints from, or concerns about parking from Lower Gibson's owners, I say, hey, there's this parking study happening and they're going to come to you. So do we, do we have more of a timeline on that, when that's going to happen?
I don't have a timeline on that just yet. We do have, we just had a workshop in June. We're going to have another workshop in August. And then from there, we're going to figure out a more detailed timeline for the strategy. And we might, we're not sure yet whether to, where the engagement is going to fall. It might come to council first and then go out for engagement, if that makes sense. So I'll give an update when I know more.
Thank you. Any other questions for planning? Seeing none, we will move to infrastructure services. The quarter two report, and we've got our director here too, to introduce that before we go to questions.
Thank you, Mayor. There's a lot here. I don't need to highlight too much of it. Maybe I'll just briefly touch on the kind of introduction, just touching on the vacancies. If you'll recall back at the end of Q1, we had a significant number of vacancies within the department. So since then, some have been temporarily filled internally with plans for doing full-on recruitment to permanently fill those positions moving forward. Ones remaining vacant for the, the capital project coordinators, remaining vacant through the remainder of the year while we reassess the priorities for the department. That's been a really challenging position to fill and keep, keep full. So we're, we're trying to maybe reassess if there's a better use of that position. There's a posting for an OIT tech, which as of the end of Q2 is not filled. I believe we're maybe just waiting to get an offer letter back. So we have, since the completion of the quarter, filled that. The engine tech position was filled and we've got a great candidate, a great person in that position, I think you've all met. She was here as a former count, staff council member. And I think she got introduced to you. A former student council member, sorry. And the water and wastewater tech as well was posted in Q2 and has since been filled. So kind of caught up on the, most of the vacancies within the department. We also did a bit of a, some reorganizing of the department, created new supervisory positions to replace the parks and public works foreman positions. So just a little bit of a elevated level of responsibility. This was kind of stuff that's been in the background since I started at the town, kind of looking at the structure of the department and looking for some opportunities for improvement. And then the number of vacancies that we had at the end of Q1 kind of provided the timing. And we've rolled that out and it seems to be going well so far. So happy with those changes. And then the only thing else I was going to highlight before turning over to questions was a note on the progress of the centrifuge. The update here, just notes that provides some status at the end of Q2. And the completion date, depending on the arrival of the conveyor unit, I just got a email this morning confirming that it was shipped today. It's on a airplane flying from Italy and it should be arriving in Gibson's by, on July 28th, 29th, which would put completion of the project in its entirety by mid-August. So with that, I'll turn it over to council for, or committee for questions.
Any questions? Counsel Lumley.
More of a curiosity, I guess, but just because it gets mentioned a lot or asked. Just what's the expected, I guess, completion or occupancy of Eagleview Heights? Like, I know the, a lot of the work's being done on that and the road was ripped up, obviously, and so on and so forth. But what, and it's, doesn't have to be, you know, a promise or anything, but I was just curious. I get asked a lot about that.
Through the mayor, I can see that there's still a deficiency list that we have, we're waiting for the kind of the official list. They're, they're working on regrading Stewart Road. There's still a bit of work left to be done between Stewart, where they install the utilities and the property line that needs to be regraded. And right now, I'm just waiting for a detailed schedule and completion plan from the developers, engineers. That's about all I can share at this point. If there's more questions, we could address those when we move in camera later.
Okay, Counsel Kroll.
Through you, Mayor White. I was sort of a little curious with the sanitary flows. I was surprised to see them actually decrease going from April to June. And I'm assuming that perhaps it's weather and us getting infiltration into the system in the earlier part of the year. And even though there might be higher volumes of flow because of tourism and one other thing, the, the stats are actually, it's infiltration from the climate that's causing the higher figures in the earlier part of the year.
Through the mayor, that's correct. That's the interpretation of that as well as, is the weather dependent? And that just highlights the infiltration that is coming in. So one thing that, I think it was early Q3, but we've got a contract out for doing some spot repairs to the collection system. The areas that were identified as kind of the most in need. So we are aware of the infiltration and kind of following all of the avenues available to address.
The, the, thank you for that. The other thing that seems to be constantly reoccurring is the issue with grease. Like in the lines, in the treatment plant. You know, I know notices have gone out with the, the water bills and things like that for people, but it seems like we really need to sort of take the bull by the horns, as it were, and come up with something that perhaps people are going to be more attentive to. Or, you know, is, have you any insight as to perhaps there's a culprit, like, you know, is it a commercial entity that's perhaps not trading grease in the appropriate manners?
Through the mayor, again, we have not been able to narrow it down to a specific property. We know which end of the collection system is coming from. There are a number of, the volume of grease that we're getting speaks to a commercial kitchen. There's a number of restaurants that would be discharging into the collection. number of restaurants that would be discharging into the collection system where we've been seeing the highest volumes and the, the issues where we've seen in the collection system where we've had grease issues. I, we did do the letter campaign. I'd have to follow up. We were, between our operators and bylaw, there was a plan to visit the commercial restaurants and do inspections of their grease traps. Per our bylaw, there's a requirement for them to be able to produce inspection records from the previous three years and that we may, with notification, enter their kitchen to do an inspection of their grease trap. So that certainly would be the next step, would be to just go through and, and do an inspection visually with one of our operators rather than just entirely relying on a third-party contractor, say plumber, to do so. So we have a little bit more invested into that inspection. And just to confirm that all of the commercial restaurants are following the best practice as far as grease collection and interception, because that's certainly, the volumes of grease that we're seeing, if not that, then, then it's a bit of a mystery where it's coming from.
Counsel Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor. The upgrades at Five Corners area and the pedestrian-focused Plaza space is, it seems like that area is also getting a little bit more in-depth as we go with, with everything happening Pioneer Park. Is there an update on timeline specifically? Architectural drawing, I think, was mentioned as far as the new plan?
CAO?
Through you, Ms. Mayor. The, that project is, yesterday, Mayor and I attended a meeting of the Harbor Authority, so we talked about that important intersection. You, you'll see there's some work happening at Grammas. There are their own, their own initiative. They're working with us on the future set of stairs. Trevor mentioned the, it's in the report as well, reference to recently approved archaeological work under that space. And we also, we're working with an architect on, on the design for the street side of it, sort of the receiving area for dropping off folks. And still interested in, in our radar is, is the bathrooms at Pioneer Park, whether it's through existing funds or, or new funding application. We're still determining that. So there's quite a bit of work there on that site. And I think tomorrow, meeting with the set architect folks. And we have got also the support from a structural engineer. So a few hands on that, just prioritizing, but it's coming along.
Thank you.
Any other questions in infrastructure? No? Okay, so we will move to 4.3 Corporate Administration and Legislative Services. I'll just see if there's an intro to this report.
Sure, thank you.
Corporate officer?
Yep, through you, Mayor White. As you know, our CAO has been supporting the manager of Human Resources and the Director of Infrastructure Services with the department reorganization, particularly the transitional period for the former manager of maintenance and operations role. So that's been an important task that he's been absorbed with. As you know, our department as a whole, our work tends to be a little less visible, a little more behind the scenes. In terms of meeting supports, these meetings that we're at right now and other meetings don't always show the level of effort that goes into them. And it's been a phenomenal meeting period and the meetings have been pretty much weekly for a while now, particularly getting us through the timelines required for budget and, and then often work that's been put off as a result of meetings being dedicated to the budget make the following meetings, we tend to have to have special meetings in order to catch up. So it's been an extraordinary amount of meeting cycles that without the usual week in between meetings that's kept us quite busy. There's always the usual time-consuming tasks of processing applications for public use permits, filming permits, and creating policies for myself this last quarter for screening officer, checklist and forms and reports. And I know for Tracy with the installation of a camera in the front counter in the, on the public side and the policy that was needed to go with that. And of course, providing support for the departments as needed in, in, in their work. Bronwyn's been very busy with a lot of that. She does a lot of that. Communications and messaging that goes with those things for things such as new signage, the Persephone campaign, she's been drafting the annual report. Our whole team provides supports for tax and utility billings and the messaging that goes with that, receiving the payments as they come in and getting those mailed out, getting those notices mailed out and invoices and bylaw reviews and drafting. Tracy has devoted a lot of time in the last quarter to the EOC setup. She's much more informed than I to answer questions on that. If you have questions around that, I would, I will refer those to her. I do need to correct an error in my report about the ICBC. The last part of my paragraph at page, at the top of page 82 got cut off. We saw retirement this year of a long-term employee, Janet Gale, which took, you know, about 12 years of experience, held the door with her. But luckily, at that time, every single one of our team had over 10 years' experience. So Karen Boxel has accepted the position as agent in filling that position now that Janet has retired. And Adriana, I was supposed to say that Adriana Rivera Vasquez has now moved from a casual position into full-time. And she's our newest member of the team. It involves about 80 hours of training, about 40 hours of ICBC training, just over, and just over 40 hours of driver services training. So she had already done all that for the casual and now we've moved her into full-time. She's been a great addition to our team and we're delighted to have her with us and to provide that ongoing support. And for the level of service that goes out of that team, which is, I hear about the comparisons between the service level here and elsewhere. And the service level here is remarkably well-informed and comes with, like I said, over 10 years' experience with most of our employees there. They have knowledge that isn't easily tapped at other departments elsewhere that provide those kinds of ICBC and driver services. Going forward, Bronwyn put some really nice highlights, notes for her priorities in Q3. We continue with bylaw drafting, continuing to do what we can to support our other departments and teams in their bylaw drafting. There's a lot of work going into the OCP and anything we can do with regard to supporting for workshops and whatnot. Delegation of authority bylaw, some work on that, a bit of work on the aquifer protection bylaw if, if it's needed. And just providing comments and reviews. Contract supports continue. In particular, we'll be looking down the road towards affordable housing-type related contracts. Bronwyn is assisting with IAP training and the public participation toolkit, which is a key strategic priority of council. And that's, website updates getting launched, a lot going on. So that's just it in that show.
Any questions, council? I think that covered it all. Yeah. Yeah. So moving on to Finance and Human Resources report. Go ahead, Director.
Yes, Mayor White, I don't have anything to add to the report. It is as presented.
Any questions, council? Yeah, and that's a pretty straightforward one as well. Yeah, very thorough and straightforward. So we appreciate that report as well. And yeah, just on the last report, that's great news to hear about in ICBC too. We always get really high compliments from the public about their service. And great news that we're kind of supporting people internally and people internally are able to move up. So congratulations to Karen and to Adriana for their, their new positions. Counsel Croll.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor White, with your permission, I actually have a question going back to Rebecca's report with respect to the EOC. I'm, I'm just wondering, do, what radio capacity do we have, like marine VHF and being able to communicate directly with the police and the fire departments other than cell phones or landlines that may or may not be available?
I'll look to see who's ready to answer this. I'll go to the CAO.
With your permission, I think Tracy would be most appropriate to speak about the EOC. She ordered particularly the communications part and there's a reference in the report.
Sorry, Mayor. Was there a question?
Sorry, beyond kind of phone connections for emergency services, especially to be, to be communicating with each other during EOC, like radio, what do we have set up?
Yeah, so we just ordered and received our satellite phones. So they will be set up this week. And our backup, so we have a generator over at 494 for, to support the EOC, the regional EOC. And we're looking into getting the Starlink set up for the building. We haven't purchased it yet, but we're still looking at options for that to, so that we don't have to have our, our servers here at Town Hall. If we have no power, we won't be able to access those servers. So we're just looking at options for that.
Thank you. And I think that concludes our quarterly reports. So now we have a motion to close under sections 91E and 92B of the community charter to be made by a member of council. And those, those sections are both listed on the agenda. Moved by Counsel Croll, seconded by Counsel Thompson. All those in favor? All those in favor? I just want to make sure. Yeah, okay. That, that motion carries. And we are closing the meeting to, in camera. And we'll, if anyone needs a...